I call it order, the April 24th, 2018 meeting of the Sling County Board of Commissioners. I ask that you please silence your cellphones if you haven't already done so. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Shadwick?
Here.
Commissioner Sparks?
Here.
Commissioner Vidrickson?
Here.
Commissioner Wees?
Here.
Commissioner White?
Here.
Please stand and join me in a flag salute followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll move now to the public forum where citizens may speak on county government on items that are not on today's agenda, usually limited to three minutes. Does anyone wish to speak? Seeing that, I'll bring it back to the Commission for Regular Business.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can I speak?
Yes, go ahead.
I'm very new at this.
Well, step to the podium and give us your name and address, please.
Pat Weller, 4756 South Kip Road, Gibson. This is concerning some bridges that are being redone out in the county. A little history on myself. Lived here in Sling County for 55 years on the same farm. I've been a volunteer fireman for 37 years. I've ran the Sling County Rural Water District for 37 years. And you've been my bosses for the last 10 years. You probably didn't even know that. I run the Kip wastewater station for the last 11 years. The bridge on Simpson Road, which is a mile and a half approximately, south of Magnolia is my concern. I've driven over that bridge probably 150 times a year for the last 37 years. So, I've been over it probably 6,000 times. They're replacing it. And they say it was because it was narrow and deteriorated. I went out and took a few pictures. And I'm gonna walk up there and I don't have enough for everybody. But I'm gonna keep one. And when I, when they said it was deteriorated, I went and checked it out. And as you can see, the cement in this, there is no cracks whatsoever. It's not like a blacktop road that gets salted on it and it deteriorates the concrete. This thing is extremely solid. If you look at how much water can go through this bridge, it's probably one-tenth of how it was originally built because the dirt that is blocking the path of the water. I wish I could've took a better picture so you could understand this. But what happens, the motor grader comes up here and this sand and rock falls over when they grade. So, it's not because of the water bringing it in, it's the motor grader pushes through. It could be cleaned out in eight hours with a backhoe and a skid steer loader. This bridge was probably built in the 1940s and it's worked in the 40s, 50s, 60s, 70s, 80s. You know, it's worked for 75 years, fine. All it needs, all that bridge needed to be fixed was a piece of guardrail bolted to the inside which would've stopped the dirt from falling in. These pictures I got aren't very good. I took them with my cellphone. That is the concrete that they busted out yesterday. And they, they broke it out and they dug. And they dug it up. And as soon as they did, it's, there's a spring very close there. So now, this is absolutely the worst time of the year to do a bridge like that near a spring because the springs open up. That's why they're called springs, is they open up in the spring and they flow. And on the east side of that, the water's running in just like a garden hose. So it'll, and I'm sure it's completely full. So now they're gonna deal with an extremely muddy area to work on. That bridge replacement is gonna be $100,000, approximately $100,000. And it probably could've got fixed for less than $5,000. Now, they're doing nine bridges, and this is the second one that they've done. I think maybe somebody should look at the other ones. I knew this one. I don't know what the other ones are. I talked to a farmer that's lived by that bridge for the last 55 years, and he agreed with me. It's not the rains problem because where the water comes from, comes from the east. And those fields have not changed. They've been pastures and they're still pastures. So there's, there's nothing different. I mean, this bridge worked fine. The concrete in it, probably better than any concrete that you can buy now. As far as being too narrow, it's a little bit narrower than what you'd want a blacktop road to have, but two vehicles can meet on it and safely pass. But, you know, you're on a dirt road, usually you can see, and if somebody's coming, you slow down, one guy goes anyway. As far as strength goes, custom cutter semis go on that bridge during the summer. It's an extremely busy road during harvest because it leads right up to the Simpson Country Club corner for Scholler Elevator. And I know good and well, there's semis that roll over that thing constantly. They weigh 100,000 pounds. So, strength-wise, it's fine. Width-wise, it's fine. Structurally, it's fine. And the only thing that was wrong with it is it has had no maintenance whatsoever, probably for the last 30 years. The county purchased a device from Leroy Douglas Manufacturing in Kip. And what this device did was it hooked to a backhoe, and it was probably 15 feet long with a little bucket on the end so the skid steer could go in, drop it, and just drag out. That's what it was made for, is to clean out these things. I mean, we had the equipment to do it. Why wasn't it used?
Mr. Weller, I guess that gets to my question. Have you contacted the Road and Bridge Department?
I, Thursday is when I was kinda concerned of this. I went out there to mark water lines and I thought, because, you know, I read...
Well, I think our next step is to contact them, and I'm sure we'd be happy to do it.
Well...
And I'd also like to have you meet with the engineer and tell him that you think it's structurally sound.
It's already, it's already broken.
We have, we have an engineer on staff that's qualified to make these decisions, and that's the reason that we, they're on our payroll. None of us are qualified to make a decision on a, on a bridge. And I do need you to bring this to a conclusion as we've exceeded your, your...
I know, and I appreciate that.
And Pat contacted me a few days ago, and I tried to hook up yesterday. We were gonna have an onsite visit and with the engineer, and I got tied up.
I don't, that's fine, Mike. I understand. I don't, I, I deal with the public too. I know what can happen, so...
Well, we will pass this along to the...
I would just like to take a closer look at the other, at the other bridges because I just, I don't mind paying taxes, but I don't like money going in places that it doesn't need to be.
All right. Well, thank you for your concern.
Thank you.
Appreciate your comments.
Thank you, Pat.
I still got your phone number, by the way, so...
I've got some other papers. If you guys wanna look through those. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pat.
Are there any other people that wish to speak to the Commission? Seeing that, I'll bring it back to the Commission for Regular Business. Item number one.
Approve Agenda for Public Forum as Presented.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the agenda for the public forum as presented.
Second.
Comments, additions? It's been moved and seconded that we approve the agenda for the public today as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item number two.
Approval of County Commission Minutes for April 10th, 2018.
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept the County Commission Minutes of April 10th, 2018 as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we accept the minutes for April the 10th, 2018. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item number three.
Approval of County Commission Minutes for April 17th, 2018.
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept the County Commission Minutes of April 17th, 2018 as presented.
Second.
Been moved and seconded that we approve the minutes for April the 17th, 2018. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number four.
Chamber of Commerce 2019 Budget Request Discussion. Don Weiser and Eric Brown.
Good morning, Mr. Weiser and Mr. Brown.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners.
Good morning.
Don Weiser, I'm President and CEO of the Salina Area Chamber of Commerce. And I really appreciate you taking the time and consideration of continuing to fund a portion of our economic development program. I do have some background information I'd like to give, give to you if I could and... With me today is Eric Brown. He's our Vice President of Economic Development. And Joyce Volk in the back. Joyce is our incoming chairman for next year. So, but I would like to go over just a little background information on economic development, just so you're aware. Some of you are aware of this, some may not be. But approximately four years ago, a determination was made by the City of Salina to cease providing city funding for economic development that was administered by the Salina Area Chamber of Commerce. At that time, the Salina Community Economic Development Organization, the SCEDO, was formed by the city, Sling County, the Airport Authority, and the Chamber of Commerce. It is a separate organization with its own Board of Directors. The SCEDO is funded by these entities with the Chamber providing support through in-kind services, including office space and related expenses. And they are located in our office. With the formation of that new economic development organization, specific responsibilities were assigned to various entities. And the Chamber's responsibilities included business retention, existing business expansion, workforce and labor development, tourism and hospitality, small business startup via the Project Open Program, and community perception and image. And I might just make, make a note here, the Chamber's tourism and hospitality program, that is funded separately by the transient guest tax. A portion of that that the city collects comes over to our office to support that. Now, currently, the Chamber receives and has received over the last few years $35,000 from Sling County to support portions of that economic development plan of the Chamber. $5,000 of that is for operations and staff support for our Military Affairs Council at the Chamber, and $30,000 for our portion of economic development. And a strong program to address the areas of business retention, existing business expansion, and workforce and labor development does require additional funding, which has really prompted the Chamber to engage in a study to measure the feasibility of also raising private dollars. And that study is going on right now. We're hoping to have some results here in the next few weeks. And we're hoping that we can, we can go out and raise private funds to leverage, if the county decides to deleverage those dollars with what we're doing. Now, I also have given you a copy of that five-year strategic plan that we have put together regarding business development and expansion in Salina from 2019 to 2023. It has got goals, objectives, measurable results. We're still tweaking this. This isn't a final document, but it'll give you an idea of some of the things that we would like to, to see and, and to make the most of, of any dollars that we can get from Sling County. So, with that, I think I'll stop. Do you have any questions at this point?
It's pretty clear. Obviously, you know where we're at in the budget process.
Yes, I do.
We're just getting started.
Mr. Chairman.
And to me, the Chamber and the economic development in Salina and Sling County is very important to all of us. And I know that from my one vote why I plan on participating. So, we'll see how the budget process goes. We thank you for your time today.
Okay.
Rumor has it you're meeting with the governor yet this morning?
Governor's in town. He's gonna be signing a bill forming a broadband task force. And so, he's, he's coming in town, gonna sign that bill at 10:30.
That's a big deal.
So, I really appreciate it moving us up on the agenda so I could be there. I wanted to be there to, to see the governor and greet the governor.
You're quite welcome. Tell, tell the governor to leave us some extra change here.
I'll do my best. I'll do my best. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Don.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, and keep up the good work.
Yep.
All right, we'll move on to item number five.
Oliver Haag Scholarship Awards. Rick Lamer, Livestock and Expo Director.
Good morning.
Morning, Rick.
I'd like to welcome this year's Oliver Haag Scholarship recipients and their guests to the meeting today. Welcome. A little background on the scholarship. In 1991, the late Oliver Haag donated land to Sling County. It was Oliver's wish that the land be used for farming and ag-related education. The profits from leasing that land pay for these scholarships. Since 2001, Sling County has awarded 36 scholarships to Sling County seniors entering college in an ag-related field. Our scholarship committee met April 2nd, and we're very impressed with the students we have here today. So, Brody, you volunteered to go first. Go to the podium.
Good morning. My name is Brody Ditto. I plan on attending Kansas State University in the fall and studying ag business.
Very good.
My name's Murphy Seim. I'm a senior at El Saline, and I plan to go to Hutchinson Community College next year and study in agriculture.
My name's Bryce Lang. I am a senior at El Saline High School. I plan to go to Hutchinson Community College next year, major in engineering, and then go to K-State University and major in ag engineering.
My name is Trevor Mullen, and I'm a senior at Salina South High School. And I plan on going to K-State and majoring in agronomy.
All right. Well, thank each, to each of you. We appreciate you applying for the scholarships, your hard work. I know your parents really appreciate it because that's a big deal. I put some kids through college and every, every dime counts, let me assure you. So, congratulations to all of you. I will step down for just a second and hand you these, these certificates. And if there's any, anyone who wishes to take a picture, they may do so. The first one is Brody.
Bob, I think Marilyn wanted to get a picture over there too. Brody, can you come back up?
Hold hands with me one more time. All right, thank you. Congratulations, Bryce. I think, I think it needs to be noted too, I believe Mr. Seim's father is a Sling County employee, so we appreciate that being done also. So, help our, help employees. All right. Congratulations to each of you and best luck.
Good jobs. Congratulations.
Good job.
Good luck.
Thanks, guys.
Down the road.
And move back.
Yeah. Take over the farm.
I will let the public know that these scholarships are renewable. Keep your grades up, and you'll be able to come back next year without even having to come up here. Mr. Lamer, you'll get your money.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks to everybody.
Have a good day.
Congrats.
We'll move on to item number six.
Livestock and Expo Update. Rick Lamer, Livestock and Expo Director.
Good morning again, Rick. This is the first quarter update for the Expo Center, Noxus Weed and Farm. I'll start with the weed department. Right now, we're making muss thistle inspections, and we'll be spraying right-aways as weather permits. Deposits for chemical purchases this quarter are $6,866.84. The weed capital outlay fund has a balance of $46,866.13. The county farm, it's in good shape. I just completed some terrace work out there. They're, had them rebuilt this winter. First half of 2018 lease payments are due July 1st in the amount of $36,000. Balance in the farm account is $161,181.93. And the current farm leases expire March of 2020. Expo Center, we had 76 event days this quarter. This was a United Methodist Church Youth Rally. This was their project for this year. They came to Sling County and distributed, it was like a semi-load of potatoes to needy families in Sling County and surrounding counties. They also distributed them to some of the various agencies across town. It's a lot of potatoes. I've never seen that May potato before. Summer auctions, we have probably averaged about six of these a month. Usually sell some pretty high-end stuff. Kinsaneras, we're doing a lot of these. I think I probably have four of them next month. These'll attract anywhere from 300 to 500 people in that 4H building. ARC Chili Feed, this benefits, it's their annual benefit for Salina Blue Thunder Special Olympics team. This is, this is an event that we've had for quite a while. Kansas Square Dancers, this is an event that actually meet at the Tony's Event Center and then dance. They have their dances in the 4H building. This is another event that we have every year, have had for years. Bread Bakers, this is one of our, we have a commercial kitchen that we rent for $100 for eight hours. This is a lady that rents it on occasion. Not really sure where she takes all the stuff, but she does a lot of baking in there. Caps Auction, this is a important community event. Their main goal is helping children and families in difficult situations. This particular auction makes up about 10% of their annual budget. What I was told is this year's auction raised a little over $70,000 for that one day. Salina Speedway Banquet, this is a relatively new event. It's their annual awards banquet. I'm assuming they're awarding their drivers and pit crews and whatnot. Salina Gun Show, another longtime event. We have two of these a year. Always seems to be pretty well-attended. Salina General Garage Sale, we have two of these a year. It's one of their fundraisers that they put on. Lot of treasures in there, I'm sure.
I'm sure, to somebody.
To somebody. Salina Ham and Bean Feed, this is probably one of our longest events. I know they've been over there for over 50 years. They benefit 4H clubs. They also do eye exams for needy children. Mid-America Farm Show, this is their 53rd year at the Expo Center. This show started out as a, a project for the Chamber's Ag Committee. The first, first ever show only had 40 vendors, and now it's grown to over 300 vendors. This was a cattle handling seminar that they had. You could buy, I mean, a little bit of everything over there. They just had anything you wanted. This was some of the vendors in barn number one. You could even buy a Black Angus Bull at the farm show if you wanted to. Sling County Mountain Patrol Rodeo, you know, Friday night it was pretty nice, Saturday it was snowing, so it was kind of a, it was down a little bit. They did have a new stock contractor this year. This is some of the bulls they attempted to ride Friday night. I think the final score was bulls 10, cowboys 1. They didn't ride many of them.
They was good bulls, huh?
They were good bulls. This is our events for May. I've got, it's, we're pretty busy. I've got four livestock shows. One of them's a national miniature donkey show that used to show in Topeka, and they moved to Salina this year. And I will let you know, I'll be working with the sheriff and, and getting some inmate workers again this summer. Worked out really well for me last summer, and, and the price is right too, so...
Appreciate that.
That, that concludes my update for this quarter.
All right. Are there any further questions to the Commission for Mr. Lamer? Is there any public comment regarding the Expo Center? Seeing that, I'll bring it back. Rick, thanks for your, your report, and thanks for your efforts over there. And we're working from our end of it to try to get this thing to where we have a, a longer-term lease and get our, get our feet a little further on the, firmer on the ground.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
So, all right. Thanks again.
Thanks, Rick.
Move along to item number seven.
Idle Fund Report. Jim DeVois, County Treasurer.
Morning, Jim.
Good morning, Commissioners. Gives me great pleasure to once again bring you continued good news on the idle funds. These are our funds that we have in investments for the quarter ending March 31st of 2018. You should have a sheet with you of the idle fund report. If you take the first column, you go pretty much a three-quarters of the way down, you will see that the 2018 year-to-date interest earnings so far is at $110,531. Last year, we made $63,372. So, we have a gain or a net gain of $47,159. If interest rates hold and everything looks good so far, we hope to exceed the $400,000 mark this year. And if you look at the history of what we've had in the past, and I've gone through that with, with you Commissioners, several times, we have a great increase in, in interest and earnings. So, that's good for Sling County.
Good job.
Thank you very much.
That's impressive. I assume it's primarily due to interest rates beginning to climb?
Yeah. You know, the money market's anywhere that we earn anywhere from a .95 to 127, and that's pretty good compared to what it had been in the past.
I think moving our money from, you know, being aggressive and bidding out our services, our proposals that you did a couple of years ago has really paid off, so...
It's been really good. And, you know, I'm really pretty, pretty proud of the team we have. I sit with Rita, and I go over it with our people in the office, and we make sure that our investments are, are good and sound, and it's gonna be the best for Sling County.
Well, it looks like it's gonna be, if, if things go as projected here, perhaps the best year in 10 years for us, so...
Sure hope so. Sure hope so.
All right. Any other questions, Mr. DeVois? Any public comment on the Treasury report? Seeing that, I'll bring it back and say thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioners.
You can go back to work and find us a higher rate.
I will.
All right. We'll move along to item number eight.
OCCK 2019 Budget Request Discussion. Sheila Nelson Stout and Patrick Wallarias.
Good mornings, Stout and Mr. Wallarias.
Good morning.
Welcome to our meeting.
Thank you. It's nice to be here. I have a handout if I could deliver those to you.
Hi, good morning. Good evening.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you. Just standing, just standing there.
I'm Sheila, and I have with me Pat Wallarias, who's Vice President, Chief Financial Officer. And I'm CEO of OCCK. We're very pleased to be with you this morning. In your pocket, there are several handouts that I'd love to talk through. I'll do so quickly. We're very glad to be here to visit with you. I think we have good news this year. And first and foremost, I wanted to say thank you for the increase last year. I know how difficult it is to budget and to find extra money to do extra things, and you did. And we certainly appreciate that. And we, we have done our best to use the tax money to the best of our abilities, so... The other good news that we got, that all providers across the state got this year, because of the advocacy of our state association, the legislature worked to raise... because of the advocacy of our state association, the legislature worked to raise rates for people who provide Medicaid long-term care services, and so all providers got a 3% increase starting last July, and in the budget is a 4% increase for next year, and so that's great news. That's the first increase that providers have had in many, many years, and so that'll be a blessing for people. You know, turnover rates are high, it's hard to pay staff, well, all of those kinds of things, so that's a great thing. As far as OCCK, we were able to serve 1,343 people this year, or actually in 2017, and we provided 298,000 rides through transportation services. Of those rides, 79% were to seniors medically related and job-related. We also assisted 99 people who were working to get jobs, and 39 of those people got jobs, and the average wage was $9.45 an hour, which is a nice average wage to start with. We supported three farmers in, in Sling County so that they can continue farming, and we provided assistive technology services to 208 people. We returned over $12 million to Slina community through salaries and goods and products purchased. We employed over 380 staff last year, with 213 of those being Sling County residents. We believe it's very important for our staff to be qualified and trained, and so we provided over 8,400 hours of training, and we have 68 of our staff with certifications and licensure, and we think that's important. As you know, in 1984, the OCCK Board of Directors decided to move from being just an ADD, just serving people with developmental disabilities, to serving anybody with any type of a disability. So for the last 30-some years, we've provided as many, as much of an array of services as we possibly can. We believe that most of us, well, we know that most of us will experience a disability at some point in our life, and hopefully, community services will be available for all of us so that we can stay as independent and productive as we can as we experience those disabilities. In 2005, OCCK received $303,000 from Sling County, and we provided services to about 1,200 people, and provided 11,000 rides. Last year, we provided services to 1,343 people and provided 298,000 rides, and we received $198,000. We have continued our commitment to Sling County by not withholding but stretching our services despite funding reductions over the last few years. We've developed over 20 different funding sources that we use to try to deliver more services every year than we did the year before. We're again asking for an increase of 5% to continue to expand our services, and I wanted to talk to you. Also, in your handouts is a colorful chart that talks a little bit about some highlighted services that we did last year, and Pat's going to talk through the Transportation Department, or part, and I'll talk through the Service Department. The first thing that's on there is, we run a loan library that has over 5,000 pieces of equipment in it that people can borrow on a short-term basis for free. If you live a ways away, we ship that equipment to you, and there's a label on it so that you can ship it back when you're done. An example of someone who might use that would be, we worked with a man last year who had his foot amputated, and he needed to get around during a recovery period before they fitted him for prosthesis, which is the longer term, and we happen to have a knee walker that you, that you use in our library, and so he was able to use that throughout his healing process so that he didn't have to buy yet another piece of equipment, because as anybody that's been through a medical process, it's very expensive for people. We were also contacted last year by the Dialysis Center, who was working with a young man to, for dialysis, and they wanted to move him to home dialysis, but he had a hearing impairment, and they were worried that he wouldn't be able to hear the machines, and so staff at the Dialysis Center contacted us and came out and looked. We provided several pieces of equipment that would allow him to hear, to know what was happening with the machine. He borrowed a device and tried it during his training. It worked well for him, and he was able to purchase that. The other thing that we, that we do is we partner with the state to recycle medical equipment, so when Medicaid buys a piece of equipment, they tag that piece of equipment and ask the person when they're done with it if they would please return it. We go pick that equipment up, we clean it up, we fix it, we recycle it to someone else who needs it. So last year, an example would be there was a young man with ALS, or Lou Gehrig's Disease, which is a very aggressive, very progressive disease. He was able to borrow an electric hot, or to, actually, we gave it to him, an electric hospital bed, a mattress, a trapeze, a Hoyer lift, which gets you in and out of bed, and a shower chair, so he got everything he needed. Again, we, we focus a lot on employment. 39 people got jobs, which is a wonderful thing. Technology services, you know, they're always important in people's lives, and it, you know, we, we get calls from hundreds of people, and sometimes the solution is very involved, and sometimes the solution's very simple. We provided lawn care services, part of what we do. We do some chore services for people through our Home Health Department, and there were some people who couldn't afford lawn care, and we have lawn care that goes out and helps people, so we provided that last summer for free for people. We work with farmers through an agribility project, which is federal and state money. We had one rancher last year who got hurt on his ranch, and he couldn't work. He called to ask how we could help him get back to work, so we went out and did some assessments and figured out that an ATV that was adapted for him, he could use for many different things, so we contacted the local Polaris dealer, and the dealer worked very well with us to adapt this piece, this ATV for him. He's now able to move and vaccinate cattle, blade pens, and lots. He hauls items and numerous other tasks with his ATV. Now we're working on drive-over gates so that he can go in and out of pastures and pens without having to get off, so that's our next project, and when we get that done, he'll be very independent with farming again. We provided, we partnered with over 80 organizations and entities in the state and locally to provide as many services as we possibly could for people. One example is, we were, we worked with a man who lived at the mission, and the mission, and they worked with the Veterans Association because he was homeless, the Veterans Administration for homeless vets. They got him an apartment, and then our, our job was to go in and help him with employment. So we went in and did that, helped him with his resume, helped him apply for jobs, helped him practice interview skills. He now has a job as a legal clerk. He's taking on more and more responsibility at his job, and he completed his associate's degree through Cloud County. So, you know, by those agencies partnering and working together, we're able to get some great outcomes for people. We work with people, the state works with accessible telephones for people, and so we're a site that people can come in, and if you qualify, which means you're, you're poor, you don't have a lot of money, you can get an accessible telephone. So last year, we worked with a 92-year-old lady who couldn't see very well and couldn't hear very well, and we were able to find a telephone that worked for her. Of course, when you're alone and you're older, you depend on calling, being able to call people. Well, actually, all of us have cell phones or something attached to us all the time, so those are very important. We held the annual expo again. We had 500 job seekers attend and 27 businesses attended, and those job seekers and businesses got connected. And we also continued to provide brain entry services to people. Worked with seven people last year, so we have taken your money, and we have done as much as we could possibly figure out to do and matched it as many ways as we possibly could to bring in more services, and Pat's going to talk to you a little bit about transportation services.
Morning, Pat.
We gave Rita a copy of OCCK's audited financial statement, the 1231, for your review, and you can tell we're still very, very financially solid. Public transportation continues to grow, both in the fixed route world and the paratransportation. Our newest addition is what we started last August, what we refer to as 81 Connection. It's an intercity route that ties Belleville, Concordia, Minneapolis, Slina. Slina certainly is the biggest beneficiary of that route, because 90% of the people are coming, coming to Slina either shop or medical or work, so we are transporting people from Belleville to Slina and Concordia-Slina. It's a very cheap ride, it's $4 if you want to go from Belleville to Slina, it's a dollar a leg, so it's been, it's been very successful. We're doing probably on an average of 200, 200 a month, which really, really is good. And of course, that is funded by all of our funding, is matched 70% by the Kansas Department of Transportation. But we look at continued growth, especially in the parrot, as, as, as we all age, more and more people are dependent upon us to provide transportation. Some of it, most of it's medical, but some of it isn't. It keeps people within homes, keep people within, in the communities, so we keep thinking that CityGo, our fixed route service here in Slina, we're looking at down, down the road, maybe a possible additional route, but that's probably pretty far down, down the road. But the parrot services, which has probably been the biggest growth for, for the last number of years, and we're looking at the continued growth with, with the 81 Connection route also, so.
You caught me a little bit off-guard, Pat, by saying that people are traveling this, the 81 Connection, actually to come to work. I mean, let's just, anybody can use that, say Belleville, or Concordia, whatever, for any reason, doesn't matter what the reason is to come to Slina, they're.
If you want to just ride.
Providing, yeah, there you go.
How many days a week does that run?
Every day, five days a week.
Okay.
There's three round trips a day. We want to make it as passenger-friendly as possible, so there's a bus leaves Belleville at 6:00, there's a bus leaves Slina, I think, at noon, and then there's another bus that leaves Belleville, so there's three, the three round trips. So if you, if you come to Slina for a doctor's appointment, you don't have to stay unless you want to, because we can, we make it as friendly as possible so you can get back home. We also give to those passengers, if they want rides, if they ask to go to a medical appointment if they're not capable of, of getting there, and we also will give them a daily pass on 81, or on, on CityGo so they can, they can go anywhere within the city, so.
So you have, you have a bus and a driver domiciled in Belleville, is that correct?
Yes, yes. We have, we have two, two drivers, one, one lives in Concordia, one lives in Belleville, and we have two buses in, in Belleville, and there's, and of course, we got the one here, so.
Okay. Well, it's unquestioned, you know, with the service that OCCK provides to Slana and Sling County and surrounding areas, there's no question about that. And, and you've already correctly stated it, Sheila, that it's budget process, and we've got, we've got to balance our books just like you have to balance yours, but, and, and I promise you, we'll do everything we can to, to get you where you need to be, and, from our standpoint, so, but we'll balance those numbers when they come to it. Appreciate your time, thank you for coming. Any other questions from the Commissioners? All right.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
This is very, very helpful. All right, we'll move along to item number nine.
RFA 140-18, FY19, KDOC Behavioral Health Budget.
Good morning, Annie.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
The next three items are our annual budgets that we do, our budgets, grants. There'll be several grants that'll trickle in over the next several months that are just smaller grants that I apply for, for the agency for different things, but these are our secured annual ones that we've, I've been doing forever, and I assume some of you have seen these before, because I've been doing them for 30 years, so. This first one, oh, before I do this, I want to acknowledge Sherri Kraus, sitting next to me. She is our new budget grant specialist, and stepped in at a time where I probably wasn't the most happy, and at a time when we were hitting one of the busiest times of our, my time is grant season, and didn't have a lot of training, and, boy, she was a superstar. She came in and she took a, I say this, a grumpy old lady, made me smile. I look for, I take the budgets home and the grants home, and I go through them with a fine-tooth comb, looking for the errors, because there's got to be errors, you know, we're going to correct them, we don't want to send it out the way it is, and each budget, which is extensive, zero errors on first review. So she, I was, I was very anxious and nervous about this, and, and I think she was a little bit, but we got through it, and I just wanted to acknowledge that she did an excellent job, and I am so grateful that she stepped in, and I feel very, very lucky, and Sling County should feel very lucky, as should Community Corrections, that hopefully, she's a long-term employee, so I just wanted to acknowledge her. So the first grant you're looking at is the Behavioral Health Grant. It is specifically designed for those severely mentally ill, dual-diagnosis substance abuse offenders. We're seeing a huge increase in those. Those clients are not the type that typically go to prison. They're homeless, they have been kicked out of every shelter in this community, because typically, the severely mentally ill do not follow the rules. I understand it. I didn't until about 10 years ago. I get it. They live under our bridges, they live in the doorways on Santa Fe until the streets start working. We give them blankets, coats, food, shelters, prescriptions, whatever it takes to keep them healthy, and they don't recidivate. They are a nuisance to the community. People are cautious of them, but they don't commit new crimes, and the crimes we have them on for are very minor crimes. If you look at the scope of offenders we see, but they're severely mentally ill, and when they're assigned to Community Corrections, it's our responsibility to service them. So this grant helps us. We collaborate with Central Kansas, or CKF, and we, out of this grant, we fund two staff members in my office. One is a high-risk officer that provides most of our supervision to sex offenders and the severely mentally ill. The other one is our program provider who does all our cognitive-based behavior groups for free to these clients. And then the third person resides at CKF, he's a CKF employee, but he's in our office multiple times a day and during the week, and he is called what we call a recovery peer coach, and he sits in our lobby and talks to the offenders and works with them, and brings them over to free services at CKF. So it's a really great opportunity that we have somebody of that skill in our office on a regular basis. But the clients then get free services and assistance, they get, they were talking about the transportation, we buy thousands of bus passes every day, I mean, monthly bus passes, all that, so they provide those also at CKF for no charge to the client, plus we give them free UAs if they'll participate in recovery, coach, and peer mentoring, so. So out of that, the grant talks about that, and these funds are maintained at our office, and CKF sends us a monthly statement that talks about the services we've utilized during that month and Dawn's monthly payout for salary, and then we reimburse them for those services. So you'll see the largest part of this grant is salary and benefits. Then you go over, we take no administrative costs, we don't take any fees for our agency, we don't do anything. We ask only for those staff and the services. So the rest of the money, not, that is not salary and benefits, is all services. What we've found through Drug Court and some of the most critical programs we offer is that detox, inpatient treatment, and services of that nature, which are very expensive, they're $180 a day, are our highest utilized. Judge Johnson likes to put them in detox instead of sending them to jail, so it is cost-effective to the county, but this grant has to cover it somewhere. So we shell out thousands and thousands of dollars from this grant and other services that Community Corrections offers to pay for inpatient beds at $180 a day. So it's an expensive process, but as you will see in the Drug Court process, it's very successful, and we're saving county bed space for people that really need it and saving county dollars, and instead using our grant dollars to service those clients. So this is a great grant, it's a great opportunity. We've been getting it for years, we've never had any problem. This grant's in the amount of $249,828.53. It goes to the Department of Corrections on the adult side. It's due May 1st. It's been in front of our Advisory Board for approval. We were in front of Ottawa County Commissioners yesterday for approval, and we're now in front of Sling County, seeking approval to get it all signed and moved on to go to the Department of Corrections due May 1st.
All right, questions of Mrs. Grievous? Bring it back here. Is there any public comment? Bring it back to the commission for possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we allow Community Corrections to submit fiscal year 2019 KDOC Behavioral Health proposal and budget as submitted with commission signatures.
Check the motion. Any further discussion? I've been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 140-118, or, 18 FY19 for the Community Corrections to submit the fiscal year 2019. Corrections to submit the fiscal year 2019 KDOC Behavioral Health Proposal and Budget. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
We will move to item number 10.
RFA number 142-18 KDOC FY19 Juvenile Services Budget Application, Annie Grievous, Community Corrections Director.
Good morning again.
Good morning. I won't give you my same annual spiel because you understand it. I don't want to bore you with my, although I can talk a long time. This grant is in the amount of $777,321.53. That is for our core juvenile services. It's broken down on the RFA. Court Services gets $500 of my grant request for their incentives, for their youth. We break out 100, almost 195,000 of it for intake and assessment. Juvenile Intensive Supervision Program gets almost 257,000. Community Case Management, which is those youth that can no longer reside at their homes and need special treatment or foster care or other things, we get about 85,000, and the remainder of it, that 200,000, is our new program that we developed, Intermediate Intervention Program, seeing big successes in it. It gives youth a chance to commit an offense, not be, they're charged, but they're on a diversion program with us, and if they complete the services and do what they're supposed to do, it's all washed and they go on. We're seeing a lot of success, and I want to acknowledge our law enforcement. We have a great relationship with PD and SO, and they worked with us to develop this program and, and change their system. They had to agree to change the way they did things, and it worked out well, so I don't want to, we couldn't have done it without their assistance, so. And then the other last piece is a prevention piece, 38,697.52, and that goes to CAPS, and Rick mentioned CAPS earlier and how they serve families and youth. This is a Spanish-speaking program that goes into our courts in Ottawa County and Saline County, and for the families that need interpreters, they have that, they provide that through the dollars in this grant. They provide in-home services. A lot of the things that we've learned over the many years is that cultural differences limit their abilities to allow people in their homes or allow services. They think they, they'll take care of it themselves, but they're not able to. And so by, by us writing this grant and CAPS providing the in-home services, it's a win-win. The parents can get an interpreter, the youth gets services, the family gets services, and nine times out of 10, they're done. So it's a positive thing, and I appreciate CAPS taking it on. We'll continue to write this grant and ask for those dollars because of the good work that happens. So the grant is different than the adult grant. It doesn't require a lot of evidence-based, research-based practices. What I talk about when I say research-based is that there are millions of data references over the last 20 years plus of how you work with offenders to increase the likelihood of success, and we implement thousands of them in our office, and I, I'm not exaggerating when I say thousands, we have lots and lots of tools. And we believe in what the evidence tells us over the years, that there are certain ways you deal with offenders, both mentally ills, dual diagnosis, and a traditional offender, that if you treat them a certain way and respond to them in a certain way and provide services in a certain way, much like Judge Johnson does in Drug Court, it's very evidence-based driven, you will see success. Those are not the clients that are going to go to prison. So this, though, on the adult side, is not strong in evidence-based, and I don't know when they're going to get there, but it's just not. It talks more about the programs, our district, it wants to know how your court addresses issues. I mean, it's just a less intensive grant. One of the things they've always told us is that disproportionate minority contact exists across the state of Kansas. Disproportionate minority contact means that the person of color, a youth, person of color is arrested and detained at a higher rate than their white peer. Across the nation, that is happening. My son just did an article, a paper on it, and I did some research for him, and, and it is happening, I, I know. But we could not find the data in this district that showed that. And KDOC was asked several times by our board to come down and, and talk to us about it and show us what they had and train us, and they don't. They're busy, I get it. So we started collecting our own data. I thought, well, we'll just check it out ourselves, and I am not a statistician, I'm not going to say I am, but I will tell you that we've collected data for years, and on page six, and the subsequent pages that come after, is all about the data we've collected. And I cannot find disproportionate minority contact. It does not show its face in this county with everything I'm doing. We have sent this to DOC, we continue to send it to DOC, and I'll continue to do this practice until I'm no longer here. But at this point, unless they want to come and show me something different, I'm going to continue to do these tracking. But it shows you what quadrants of the city we get the highest arrests, it shows you what arrests, it talks about violent arrests and less, it talks about persons of color, persons not of color, it talks about everything. It doesn't exist. And if you ask law enforcement, I kind of started the talk 10 years ago or so, and law enforcement looked at me and they said, Annie, we arrest the people that commit the crime. Okay, all right, so, you know, I get where they're coming from, but I have to say that they're right, the data does not show it. So we'll continue to track it, unless DOC wants us to do something different, we'll go down that path. But it is interesting data, if you have a chance to look at it. The rest is, just like I said, pretty basic information about our program, and then it goes to the CAPS program and everything they do. We have, we had to show a cooperative agreement between Saline and Ottawa County, we've had that for 30 years, it continues, and that's really it. And like I said, this has been in front of our advisory board for approval, we were in front of Ottawa County yesterday, and now we're seeking the approval of this board to get signatures and forward on to DOC by May 1st.
I think it's important to point out to the public that the $738,000 that we're talking about here is not a direct cost to Saline County.
No, this is all state.
It's grant, grant-funded money from the state.
Nothing I'm talking about today is any cost to the county, except for your all taxpayers.
Right, except, right.
Right.
Exactly. There is an underlying cost, but it's certainly not 738,000.
Poor Sherri's covering her share too.
So, okay, further questions of the commission of staff?
No.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. These three grants, the Kansas Department of Corrections, do we know, going in, that they're going to fund these 100%, or do we, is it, do they ever come back saying, we're going to give you 90% of what you requested?
Here's what happens. Because legislative session isn't over, and because, you know, they're still trying to tie up school funding and other things, you don't know until May, June, I'm not going to, June. Our fiscal year starts July 1st. I've been notified of changes up till June 28th. So here's what happens. They give you an allocation that they think they're going to fund you with, not on the Behavioral Health, but on the other two major grants. So you build a budget based on that allocation, and you have to fill out all the application, whether you're going to fund it or not. And then, if you get the money, great, you go with your budget. If they deduct you or give you more, by the grace of God, somebody gives Corrections more money, then you have to redo your budget.
Thank you.
Yes.
Can I answer your questions for you, Andrew? All right, good, good questions, though. Bring it back to the Commission for Possible Action.
Mr. Commissioner. Mr. Chairman, I move we allow Community Corrections to submit fiscal year 2019 Juvenile Services Application and Budget as submitted with Commission signatures.
Second.
Been moved and seconded that we allow Community Corrections to submit fiscal year 2019 for the KDOC Juvenile Services Application. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number 11.
RFA 143-18 KDOC FY19 Adult Services Budget Application, Annie Grievous, Community Corrections Director.
Good morning.
All right, we'll listen again.
Okay. This grant is the adult DOC annual in the amount of 832,642.20. That is the amount, to address Andrew, that we were given to, say, write your budget based on. We don't know if that'll be the final draw, but over the few years it has, but anything can happen, so. This is annual, and, and it's critical to our adult program, and it is not direct county funds, it is a state grant, but it is funded by taxpayer monies, as anything would be. So this funds our entire adult program, but as you know how many grants are written a year, not all the adult staff fit in here. There's no way I could fit all salary and benefits within this grant budget. So we have some people that are funded through county dollars with Drug Court, we have some people that are funded with the Behavioral Health Grant, I write federal grants to fund other staff and salaries. There is no way, if you just sit back and allow the state to cover your program, I'd be laying off four people. You just can't do it. You have to go out and you have to write more grants and seek more dollars because the dollars are ever-changing, so. I'm just warning Sherri, there's more to come, but they're smaller. Okay, so I want to talk just a little bit about our adult population. We talked about the mental health and the severely mentally ill clients increasing, and that is ever-growing, and that's certainly an issue that I want to watch very closely. But one of the things that we have seen over the past 10 years or more is that less dollars come, we're ever-growing in our population, jails, prisons are growing, we know that, we're, we're dealing with it right here, but the dollars don't rise, you know, they don't continue to fund this population of offender. So we do not meet the outcome of DOC, we haven't for years. They want a 75% success rate of your population of offenders every year. We're about 66%, almost 67%. It, it's a struggle every year. Everybody, the judges, everybody hates the funding formula, but that's their funding formula. If you don't put a person in a state prison bed, that's a success. Now, they could not be a successful client, they could still be struggling, but if you didn't put them in a prison bed throughout their time of probation, that's a success, and I can count that as a success. I disagree with that, but that's fine. So anyway, I talk about some research I did for this year and where I, I quote the dollars and how the increasing population and that ideally, our agency should not be carrying 500 severely high-risk offenders. You know, we're carrying 500 of those with aid officers, they're carrying caseloads way too high to do the work, but we do it. So one of the things I think that's interesting is that we revoked 89 offenders to state prison in 17, 2017. Forty-four of those were due to new convictions, 33 were due to non-reporting violations, which means we continually have them not come, we go get them, bring them back in, they go back to that, go get them, bring them back in. We do that multiple times, eventually a judge has had enough and he sends them to prison. So that is the largest population, and I have not figured out how to stop new convictions or to get people to keep coming in. I don't know. We offer free services, we offer incentives, I think Sherri's a nice gal, I'd want to come in and visit with her if I could. I don't get it, but they don't come in, it's the simplest thing in the world, come in, but they don't. So dispositional departures are also one of our highest revocations, and those cases are the cases that by law should have been sent to prison, but the judge has determined there was some significant factor that put them on Community Corrections. So there are pretty high-risk, pretty serious offender that comes to Community Corrections, yet 36% that year were our total revocations. Then for 18 to date, 57 we've revoked, 26 of those were new convictions, 22 due to non-reporting. So we're seeing that that's not changing, and 52% of the cases revoked were those dispositional departures. So the highest risk, the highest level offender come to us, and those are the ones that are getting revoked, and that's, I would say, is one of our reasons we cannot meet that outcome, which is undaunting to me, I'm not happy about it, but it is what it is. So, but I also want to talk about, across the state of Kansas, they monitor risk levels. We do what we call an LSIR assessment, which determines the risk of the client based on their history and the risk to reoffend in the community. We carry 60% of our 500 cases at the highest level risk, the most dangerous. We have people that have past murder convictions, past rape convictions, we have very violent offenders coming to us, and those are the ones that get revoked. Those are the ones we're seeing, only 8% of our caseload on the adult side is low risk, 8%. But when you look across the state of Kansas, and I'm not going to mention counties, I do it at the board meeting, but I won't do it here, there are counties that are carrying 40% of their caseload at the lowest risk. Well, I could succeed there, I can, I can get rid of 40% and be successful. It's hard to get rid of 60% of your highest risks with the past histories they have and be successful. So that is my beef. Should we work and continue? Absolutely. Is 67% good enough? No. But I would tell you that I've been doing this for 32 years, and I do not see it changing, and I see that this is forever an issue. I talk about research-based programs, I talk about everything this agency and our staff are outstanding, our juvenile, our adult staff have done so much to train and retrain and redevelop, develop new policy, develop everything they can to increase that success. And so I, I, I think those staff are the most dedicated people I've ever met in my life, and I couldn't be more delighted with the work they provide, but we still have work to do. So anyway, that is what it is. The rest of it is evidence-based practices, which is great. I appreciate the fact that they look at these things and want to know, how do you take the evidence and put it into your program? How do you develop programs and continue to work on that? And that's what everything is about, the rest, until you get to that daunting budget that Sherri conquered, and like I said, a majority of it is salary and benefits, because we have a large population of staff and a small amount of money. You all know we're moving into May, put it on your calendar, and our rate, our increase in rent is going from five-something to 11-something. So we had to finagle extra rent, extra facility costs, those kind of things, plus it's costing us quite a bit to move, we had to do all-new furniture and several things, so that also will come out of here, but also of an unexpended budget that we save for those kind of rainy day things. So that budget is complete, it narrows down to the penny, thanks to Sherri, and I would ask that you approve this grant and budget and sign off. It's been in front of the advisory board, it was in front of Ottawa County Commissioners yesterday, and we'd like you to approve so we can move it on by May 1st.
Further questions of staff?
I have a couple other questions, Mr. Chairman, just full of questions today.
Oh, you're good, I'm glad.
So typically, my experience with the grants, if you're not hitting the metrics, they, it'll affect your funding, have you seen that with this grant?
Yeah, absolutely. This year, we were flat-funded, I should have said this. So the last two years, we'd lost $40,000 each year, and had to make it up in other grants and other abilities, and it was because we weren't meeting the outcome. I challenge them every year, I send a letter, we, my board chairman's here, and we send letters, and we let them know, you know, are you looking at this, are you looking at this? And we got a letter back this year that said, here's our exact thing we're looking at, high risk, successful rate, everything. So we chalk off everything but the successful outcomes. There is discussion right now that they're going to bring it to the legislators to reduce that. There are about eight programs across the state that meet it, maybe a few more, maybe 10, programs across the state that do meet that 75%. But again, if you look at their risks, 40% are low, and the rest of it's medium and high. So last year, we took a 40,000 cut, the year before, we took a $40,000 cut. This year, we were flat-funded, and so Judge Johnson says, I want to know why they didn't cut us, we didn't meet it. And so again, Todd and I reach out to DOC, and they said, because we do everything that we can do, we've done everything. In fact, we even invested staff time and effort and had an audit by DOC come in and look at all our practices to tell us, you tell us what we could do differently. And because we did that, they flat-funded us, which I would say is reduced still, but we did flat-fund it. Does that answer that?
Yes. My second part of this, and I know you're not done with grant season yet, is there any other large Department of Correction grants that, that they, because I see you have the adult population, you've got the behavior, behavior health, and then the juvenile sector, is there another sector we're not asking for from the Corrections?
Oh, no, not from Department of Corrections. These are the three they offer. The rest of my grants that we'll apply for will be foundation grants across the nation, a federal grant or two. National Institute of Justice will apply for something there, we'll look for whatever we can, but this is the only dollars you can apply for at the, that level. Yes. Oh, and I do want to say, I'm sorry, because of those agencies that are doing well, I think there's six or seven, we're actually going to go on tour. We're, Sherri, my We're, Sherri, myself, and Michelle Stevenson, we're going to go visit those agencies. We may drag Todd along a little bit. And we're going to go find out what they're doing different than what we are to be successful because it's beyond me to figure it out. And I know I'm probably old and bitter, and so, you know, I probably not being fair about it, but I'll take fresh Sherri and Michelle and Todd and, well, we're going to, we're going to find out what they're doing. And if there's something we can develop differently based on that tour, we'll do it. But we'll see. I'd be glad to have you come along, Andrew. Or any of you, five.
Annie, I just wanted to ask the question here. Do you, do you feel that maybe coming into a new building and new facilities with new colors and new everything, that some of these people will look at it going, hey, I don't mind coming in here, I'll just maybe get that started, and they'll want to come back to see you?
I think there's very possible, no, I mean, that sounds funny, but it's not funny. You would be surprised the number of offenders, clients that come in now just because they like a certain person in our office, and they just want to chit-chat for a while. But I think when we offer them a safer environment, because I would say where we're at now is not safe. It's not safe to staff. It's not safe to clients. It's not safe for Rita clogging up our stairs. You know, it's not good. And so when we can offer a safer environment and a little newer, fresher look, you know, because you've been over there. It's not pretty. And so I think that that might improve some of that.
I'm just.
No, I don't think it's, I think it's a great question.
Yeah.
Yep.
Question for Annie. You have a joint county with Ottawa. Your, your office handles the Community Corrections for Ottawa County.
Right, we're the 28th District. So we provide every service that we talk to here, we offer in Ottawa County. Now, they're a very small population, but intake goes there at night and answers youth that have been runaways or what, arrested. We take care of them. Adult and juveniles that are put on probation, we service.
Do you have a satellite office in?
We used to have an office there, but we found that we don't really need the office. What happens is, is that we can use space that's in their courthouse, but a lot of the youth have services here. They're serviced by CAPS or CKF. So we work it out where we can meet them here within our office or at a service provider. But yeah, we do offer that. They're a small population, but we've had that for many years.
All right. Before I bring it back to the Commission for Action, is there any public comment regarding Community Corrections or grants? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the Commission for Possible Action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we allow Community Corrections to submit fiscal year 2019 Adult Services Application and Budget as submitted with Commission signatures.
Second motion.
Been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 143-18 for the KDOC FY19 Adult Services Budget Application. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Thank you.
Thank you, Annie.
Can I say real quick, there are a lot of signatures. I need signatures from every one of you, plus the chairman.
We will, we will be meeting in the adjoining room immediately following this meeting.
I will leave them with Andrew and get the signatures, and then we'll come back and get them. Thank you.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other business to be brought before the Commission? Or are there any announcements?